Ladies and gentlemen, we have one resolution coming out of executive session. Please go green. Resolution 2017, the O E forty-six. Be it resolved that the superintendent is hereby authorized to direct a comprehensive medical examination and evaluation, including psychiatric and/or psychological examination and evaluation, if necessary, of employee number eight-three-nine, in accordance with provisions of section nine thirteen of the education law. And be it referred to resolve that the board hereby directs the employee number eight-three-nine, submit their medical records, if any, to the extent before the time is determined by examining physician physicians to the board, designated examining physician physicians, at or before subject examination and/or evaluation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, motion carries. And that brings us to the first opportunity for public participation. Anyone wishing to address the board at this point, please approach the podiums, speak directly into the microphone, so pick it up for our video and identify yourself. You have two minutes, and our board clerk, Mr. Puna, will let you know when you're approaching the two minutes.
Good evening. I'm Zoe Dunn. I live at one fifty-nine Main Street in Kingston. I am a business owner and resident in Kingston for over ten years, and I have a kindergarten student at George Washington Montessori. I know there is concern that the longitudinal study on GW is being conducted as an attempt to remove the Montessori program from GW. This is a concern that I've heard from several parents whose children are currently in GW or who are preparing to attend in the future. I personally know quite a few families that have either bought homes in the neighborhood so they could send their children to GW, and we are thankful that they chose to place their tax dollars here instead of elsewhere, or that have asked for an exemption, as we have, specifically so they could have their children attend the public Montessori elementary school, though they reside in another neighborhood. I have just a few requests tonight. My first regards the confirmation of the key question being asked by the longitudinal study. There is great distinction between conducting the study in order to understand whether or not GW should remain a public Montessori elementary school versus how successful GW is as a public elementary Montessori school. Of course, I hope it is the latter, and that this study will uncover gaps and opportunities in the current GW approach and curriculum that can be addressed and amended to achieve even better results in the future. Secondly, a lot of people, including me, do not feel test scores give an accurate prediction of students' future success, which is, after all, what we're looking to shape. I understand that you will balance the quantitative data with qualitative data. I ask that you share with the parents the framework and methodology for that qualitative data. I'm hoping it will include interviews with stakeholders ranging from former to current students and parents, and perhaps most importantly, the former and current teachers and principal of GW. With less than a month left, have you approached these stakeholders? And if not, can you address where else you're going for the qualitative information?
Thank you, Mrs. Puna. Thank you. You can leave here. Yeah, you can give someone, someone else can give you their time, their time if they want.
Or you can give your-
Or you can give your letter to someone else. You can leave a letter with my board clerk, and she'll make sure you're there.
Thank you.
My name is Casey Wimbush. I live at one forty-three Henry Street, and I have a child who's in second grade at the George Washington School. We live right down the street, are in the district. I'm just here to express my support for the school remaining a Montessori school. My child has completely thrived there, and I'm thrilled as a parent. But more importantly, as an educator, I have a master's degree from the Bank Street College of Education. I've taught elementary school and adults for many, many years, and it's from my educator eyes that I am so amazed when I enter that school building. And I currently work at the Kingston State Farm Project, and I work with various classes at the GW school. And I've had the great honor to work with a variety of teachers within that building. And each and every time, I am so impressed with what is going on in those classrooms, the way that those, the teachers are conducting their classrooms, the way that those classrooms function. The children are so independent, there's so much control of one's learning that goes on. Built into the Montessori curriculum is differentiated learning, and meeting a huge range of needs. The multi-age classrooms, I think, are so amazing for building children's confidence, building relationships with the teachers over a long period of time. And then what I am impressed, incredibly impressed by, and I know that the district is currently really putting a lot of resources behind, is the social-emotional learning. And the social-emotional learning component that is built into the Montessori curriculum is so amazing. From the minute those children enter that school in pre-kindergarten, they are learning how to resolve conflicts independently. They are learning a form of self-discipline based on these level A, B, C, or D behaviors. That vocabulary carries throughout the school environment. It carries from every single classroom. Thank you.
Do you want to leave?
No, it's like scribbled throughout.
Hi, my name's Elana Berger. I live on Franklin Street. I'm also a parent at George Washington, a member of the PTO. And I appreciate, I think, sort of hearing so much different perspectives, but, so I moved here four years ago when my partner got a job teaching biology at Bard College. And so we looked at schools in Red Hook, New Paltz, and then I did the tour at GW. I imagine many people would be like, you picked GW over the public schools in Red Hook and New Paltz? But I did, I loved it. I loved the diversity of the super body. I loved even from a small tour. First of all, if you ever have, you should do a tour. The kids run it, it's amazing. I got a huge sense of the community at that school from that tour. So we moved to Kingston in the district so that my daughter, who's now in third grade, she's been there since kindergarten, could attend GW. And, you know, I just want to share how, first of all, appreciate the Kingston City School District for allowing this experiment to happen. I feel like it's been tremendously successful, and I just want to say that the things that we're sharing here, we heard, we did a coffee and conversation a couple weeks ago, heard from some board members, this idea that, like, it's so great that you all are proud of the school, but that would be true at any school. And I wanted to say very respectfully that I disagree, and that the Montessori component is a huge part of why we love this school so much. A lot of the things that I could share, Casey talked about, I think the multi-year classrooms have been tremendous for my daughter, having a teacher who can work with her throughout her time there. Also, the social-emotional learning piece, the piece rose. The kids learn to deal with conflict in a way that I've never seen kids in super intense conflict can actually communicate with each other, work it out. And I've actually had my daughter use it on me at home, my partner and I are fighting, offering the piece of growth. So I just, I want to ask, and there's lots of questions about the study that we all have that, like, we'll also submit in writing, but mostly I know that the start of the Montessori program is extremely contentious. I wasn't here then, but I've read and heard about it. And this feels like an opportunity to sort of work together as the board and the superintendent as a community, in a way to make this program, it's the best it can be without all the drama. So hopefully, looking forward to working together. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this point? Anyone else? Are there no one who belong to approval in minutes of October fourth? Excuse me. All right, good motion. Have there been amendments or corrections to the report? All right. Are there none? Those in favor of approving the amendments by October fourth? Please, you probably say aye.
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 Okay. Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Superintendent's report. Turn the floor over to Dr. Pele Wino.
And I will turn the floor over to Megan Ziegertus. She looks surprised when I said that, sir.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Okay. In the spring of two thousand seventeen, the Kansas City School District was awarded a competitive My Brothers Keeper Grant for family and community engagement programs. The grant is designed to support programs to increase the academic achievement and college and career readiness of young men of color while fostering positive relationships with families to promote the success of all students. The KCSB's My Brothers Keeper Program has brought increased funding momentum and success to several partnerships, including the English for Parents Program with Ulster Lyricist Association, the Boys and Girls Club of Kingston, and a collaborative restorative justice forum is planned for the city of Kingston for the spring of two thousand eighteen. Tonight, we will take a closer look at the Brothers at Bard Program, a character development and academic enrichment program at Kingston High School. The executive director of the program is Dario Vasquez, who you will see in the video. He's a two thousand seventeen graduate of Bard College, and he's now a full-time president at CHS. So here you go.
Brothers at Bard is a youth development academic enrichment mentorship program for young men of color in ninth through twelfth grade at Kingston High School. The program started the fall of two thousand fourteen. I was a sophomore and undergrad, and it really started and stemmed from the on-campus brotherhood group that we started. We decided that we wanted to kind of do some mentorship work in the local community. We started looking at Kingston, and really it was, the community kind of accepted us with open arms.
I was really pleased to see that they were offering a program of character development for males of color, since we didn't have anything like that in the district. It helps to fulfill a need. We don't have a very much diversity in our staff. We don't have many teachers of color. We don't have many males of color. This was a great way to try to help fill in those gaps and give kids the support that they might need.
It's lovely to see that, you know, the school wants to invest more into the program. There are just resources that we have needed in the past that we are now able to either afford or have access to that have allowed us to be able to work more closely and better with our mentees.
The program works in twofold, because it helps with the retention and well-being of the young men on campus at the collegiate level, but then also, of course, offers that mentorship piece and early college exposure to the high schoolers.
Well, today with tutoring, like, they help, they bring a lot of mentors to help us, like, with our grades and stuff, like, they got a history major, science major, and math major, and they help us with stuff that's difficult for us. Well, it feels good, because then it's like another hand, like, to help me get through school. It's like I don't, I feel like I don't have to do it by myself.
These, these group of men already have a lot stacked on their plate, and our job as mentors is to teach them how to deal with their problems while still getting the full of provided education from their high school.
It makes things easier at school. I don't really feel as stressed as I used to. They really pushed me to start studying. They've really just taught me how to break bad habits.
Every student in every class can learn everything. So we take this time after school to, you know, not only just, you know, see how their day was, there might be some mental things that they're going through while they're in this class, but when we mentor them, and at the times with us, it's the time where they can really do the homework. It's like a comfort zone for these young men.
We have students who are on high honor roll, on track to go to a competitive four-year college, and then we have students who might have been left behind or have IEPs or need extra assistance. And then what you have is you start to, you start to see brotherhood develop amongst students who otherwise probably wouldn't talk to each other. And so you start to see that peer mediation.
We meet up at the Boys and Girls Club on Fridays, and, you know, we talk about stuff, how our day is going, how our week is going, just stuff we can let out in front of people, because we know we can trust people, because namesake, we're a brotherhood.
The mentoring sessions sort of range as well from, everything from interview etiquette, how to tie ties, networking, to also having deep conversations about identity and positive or healthy forms of masculinity, and other kinds of issues that are pertinent to thirteen, fourteen-year-olds who are developing and coming of age.
So if you lose, you support the person that beat you, all right?
It's good to know to have people to talk to and people to come to when I need something to talk about or when I need help.
The mentors are not removed from the issues that are going on in our young people's lives, and because in often cases, they're still going through them or have persevered and overcome themselves.
We might be going through it all at the same time, but we can help each other at the same time, too. I can learn from them and be encouraged by them, the same that they can be, that they can learn and be encouraged from me.
We're like best friends. Everybody gets along with each other.
Like, it's a brotherhood.
You see growth in a variety of different ways. The best testament oftentimes doesn't really come from the students who all of a sudden start excelling and go off to, you know, four-year colleges. Oftentimes, when we get students who start off really rough, and we really try to meet them where they're at, and if they get into a two-year school or transfer into a GD program and complete the GD program, and then we see them get full-time employment and come back to the group and be guest speakers to the younger students, I think that's the best testament to the way that we see our young men grow.
Thank you, Mrs. Yvonne Booth.
Funny that this was up here today, because I had a conversation with, just this weekend, with a parent whose son was kind of headed in a not right direction, and he did summer nine, and then he does this part, and she said it's been absolutely transformative. He's a different kid and transforming. So I just, my, my parents, if you could pass that message along, because it's been really, it's just changed his world.
That's great, I will. Absolutely.
Mrs. Lewin, then, Mr. Jordan. I think it's a great program. Are they meeting Monday through Thursday and Friday?
They meet, they meet, they meet twice a week.
Oh, just twice a week?
They meet twice a week for touring sessions, and every other Friday, they meet for mentoring sessions at the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay, and do they take ninth through twelfth graders? Because I prefer that whole topic. Thank you.
I was just going to say, there's so much about this that I love. I love seeing the kids in our new facility and just in that bright, beautiful building. I love the fact that we're partnering with Bard, with such wonderful role models, and I love that we're partnering, partnering with Boys and Girls Club, a community agency. So this is like, good, 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 and I really applaud everybody who's involved in starting it and, you know.
Again, I applaud the, what's happening within the district with these kids, and it's really great. And I know that, for me, very much with the Bard program before they came here, how many children are actually involved?
Right now, there's about, there's between fifteen and twenty kids. I'm not exactly sure of the exact number, but it's between fifteen and twenty children.
And they follow them through the four years of life plan?
Yes, yeah. I mean, they can join at any point, they don't have to join as freshman, join as juniors, so.
Thank you.
Maybe it's asking too much, because it is wonderful. Maybe the next step is to get young women involved.
Yeah, that's something. Something we brought up in this.
Thank you very much.
So our superintendent's report order seems to be queued up differently than the, than the, than the technology is queued up, so I'm not really sure how this is going to work. We have Mr. Barton, our principal's report from Edson Elementary School, and we'll recalibrate our order of operations here.
Did Mr. Crawford?
I'm sorry, it sounds like I didn't realize Mr. Martin didn't have it there. I'm like, I know, but here my name called.
Good evening. If you don't know me, I'm Brian Martin, and I'm principal over at Edson Elementary School. And, you know, for the past two principals' reports to the board, I focused a lot on some special events, reaching out to parents, community outreach, and also some of the things that we're doing with TBIS. For this year, I wanted to focus just a bit on some nuts and bolts ways that I supervise RTI, the SIP process, and data analysis at the school. And I promise you it's going to be quick. But what I gave you with the handout is a really good description. It just kind of shows you the steps. I just wanted to start off by saying, first of all, when I went to Edson, it's the biggest of the elementary schools, one of my goals was to try and make things as efficient as possible, and one of the concerns that some of the staff members had expressed was that services to students were being canceled so specialists could go to RTI meetings and SIP meetings and so on. So one of my goals was to have what I like to call smart meetings. So almost all of the meetings that take place on that handout that you have take place at eight twenty-five in the morning so that there's no conflict with instruction, there's no conflict with specialists servicing students. And also, it opens up the meeting to any staff member. I'm very flexible. If anybody wants to come, they're welcome. I do encourage, though, that certain staff members attend these meetings. The other thing I want to mention, too, is one of the important, most important roles I believe I had as a principal, besides the evaluation process, is to closely monitor how our students are supported by the staff. And that's just general teaching, but also helping the students that need more help. And that's what we call the RTI process. I also felt it was my role to help educate the teachers on what data to look at and how we analyze the data, and most importantly, how we use the data. So just to give you a quick rundown, there's three processes here that I just want to quickly go through. And it all falls under our building plan, which is the SEP, Tenet Two Building Leadership. I know you're mostly familiar with that whole plan for the district. So what I do is I have three hats that I pretty much interchange. One of them is I monitor what's called the SIP process, and that process is when we have meetings where specialists are invited to talk about a student that we have some concerns about. They're not making the appropriate academic progress, maybe they're having some social-emotional issues, and so we invite the team of specialists, which would be like the speech teacher, OT, PT, classroom teacher, other support staff members come. And what we do is we talk about, well, what are the concerns? And we come up with some targets. What are the things that we want to see change? And then strategies, how are we going to help the child out? And that's what we call the SIP process. And eventually, what happens, too, is there, some students might end up being referred for testing for special education if we feel the SIP process is not helping them out and reaching those goals. The other hat I wear is what we call the RTI process. And what I do is I meet with my classroom teachers once every ten weeks, and it's myself, the classroom teacher, and any specialist that join us, and we really focus on specific students and data. And if you flip over the sheet, the backhand side, that's the tracking tool I use. Now, I fill in that information myself. I don't expect the teachers to do it. So when I'm meeting with the teachers, I'm tracking information for each student. Well, one of the ways I make this quick and easy for everyone is I maintain a full-up reach teacher with RTI, and I have all the data in it for their class. So when I'm talking to the teacher about RTI, I have their reading scores and their STAR scores, and I have all that information that's fun of me to talk to the teachers about. With RTI, the biggest phase is determining what are the skills that we're going to target for those children, for that child in particular, what tier level they qualify for RTI, tier two or tier three, and then what are going to be the strategies we're going to use. So then what ends up happening is I meet with the teachers during the year for the RTI meetings, I'm progress monitoring with them how the children are doing. Are they moving from one tier to another? What are the latest scores? And to be honest with you, I really enjoy these dialogues, because it's also allowing me to have a good pulse on the students in my school and where they are. We also created an Edson unique team, and you'll see it right there. It's called Children with Multiple Language Exposure. And the reason why we created this team is because at Edson, we have such a large, you know, population that when I have meetings with teachers, they're oftentimes saying, I just don't know what to do to help them. You know, I have a third grader that just came from Mexico who is reading at like a kindergarten level, you know, how do I help them? So we created this separate group, and what that group does is they contact the parent, and we have our bilingual family worker involved as well, our ENL teacher, and they get a lot of details from the parent about their background and what kind of exposure the children have to the educational setting. And then they report back to the teacher. And the reason why we did this is because we wanted to get back on the number of ENL students that were going through the SIP process. So that was a change for this year. And the third thing I wanted to mention was the grade-level data team. I firmly believe, in addition to the RTI, I believe it's important to have conversations about data. So what I do is I have the grade-level teams meet with me once every ten weeks. They know in advance what the data is we're going to look at. They're responsible for understanding the data, looking through it, and we also have the reading teachers and other specialists that come. Sometimes the meetings have like fifteen hundred people. And what we do is we talk about that targeted data, and we open up by talking about trends. What are some of the things we're seeing in all the classes that relate to that data? We talk also about what are some things that we're doing very, very well with the students that they, they're high achievers at, and then we drill down to, okay, what are the areas that we really need to look at and address? And what we do at that meeting is we come up with strategies, and we come up with ways we're going to progress monitor the information. And what I wanted to mention, too, is since I only meet with these groups of people every ten weeks, I also monitor their progress by asking for data from them. So for example, this week, I just asked all my teachers to give me a sample of a progress monitoring sheet for tier-two support in their class. And then what I do, I collect that, and I look through it to see if they're following what we agreed to at the RTI meetings. So just wanted to give you sort of a nuts and bolts description of how it works. I also wanted to mention, too, the secondary schools, of course, are going to have a different process for this. This whole process is very unique to each school, so every building leader might have their own flavor for how this happens, but I just wanted to share with you how I do it at Edson. So I hope it wasn't too academic for you, but I just wanted to share with you basically what this whole process is. I don't have a fancy video recorder, but. Now, I've been very sick, and I'm all plugged up, so if you have any questions, just speak up for me, okay? Thanks. Yes?
I appreciate the organization of this. I just had a question about where it says the principal approves or rejects the SIP referral. Is that, what are your criteria in terms of that?
That's a really good question. My criteria is how much the teacher has done before the referral to the SIP process. Like, I want to make sure I've seen the progress monitoring they have in place for the modifications or accommodations they've been using with that child. Sometimes we do refer children quicker than others if they're new to our school and we have some concern, maybe there's something else going on and we just can't quite pinpoint. But I rarely reject them, because the teachers know that in order for them to refer a child for a SIP, it has to be a conversation with me in the RTI meeting. So I rarely reject them, because we usually agree, yes, this child is ready for it. And I want to mention, too, we carry our SIPs over, too. So instead of the process ending every year, we sometimes have students that, at the end of one year, will have a follow-up meeting in September, and what we do is we look for regression. I'll have the reading teacher do a special reading test on them, and we'll see what kind of regression happens during the summer, because with those students, they can oftentimes regress several reading levels. So those are like targeted students that we pay close attention to in the fall. Yes?
I just want to make sure I paid attention correctly when you were talking about the RTI monitoring. So you meet with each teacher every ten weeks? Is that what you said?
Yes, specifically for RTI. Yes, specifically for RTI.
And so, and what percentage of the students in the class is that roughly?
You know, it really varies on the class. If it's a consultant class, we don't have too many tier-two or tier-three kids in consulting classes because the neediest kids are usually already classified, so I'm not having a conversation with them about IUPs. The classes we have more students that we discuss tend to be the classes where we have more of the ENL kids because sometimes those children, because of their limited exposure to English, are often falling into the tier-two and three support system. So for example, I had a meeting this morning with a teacher, and I think we discussed about seven students that were tier-two and three for math and DLA. But then I had a meeting with another teacher a couple days ago, and she only had three students. So it just kind of varies on the makeup of the class. And at Edsin, we try to put our ENL students, we try to group them in one or two classes that makes the pull-out and push-in much easier for the ENL teachers, and it's almost like a team effort.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, everybody.
One thing you notice, Mr. Martin, his presentation and his efficiency here, and he made a lot of claims to be organized, I will confirm, Mr. Martin. And when I go to his building, if I ask a question about something, he has, he has written, and he didn't scramble it up together, he has it.
Thank you.
And so he's very impressive in his organizational skills and how he does have, you know, I think he's a systems architect for sure.
Thanks.
Okay, next, this is the presentation report. We have our board's report, and Mr. Prusser is here.
Thank you very much. Before I go over the financial overview, I just want to go over a couple items. I want to thank the district office for their cooperation and courtesy throughout the whole process. As you can see, the audit report is a very large document, it's over like over seventy pages now, and it's going to get longer, so. So there's a lot of data to get together, and your district does a great job. They actually pretty much put together the whole financial with not too much assistance from us, which is great that you're one of the few that can do that, all the schools that we do. So that's one of the good aspects of that. Anytime we needed anything, we're here a couple times every month, all the way through to the presentation. And I met with the audit committee a week ago, and we had a good discussion about the financial statements and the extra classroom reports, and went over the whole document. Your district got an unqualified opinion, which means the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects and accordance with general accepted accounting principles. So that's what you're looking to have when you do a financial activity opinion. You had no material weaknesses identified, no significant deficiencies, and there were no compliance items material to the financial statements. So looking at that, that's exactly what you want, you know, problems. And then your extracurricular was unqualified, too. I did a financial summary there, so it kind of, you go from seventy pages, so I flipped it through the whole thing. But you kind of look at the last three years, and you look at your district, your general fund, looking at this year, you have over sixty million dollars of assets, almost, you have twenty-five million dollars of liabilities, but a fund balance of over thirty-five million, which is excellent. And you look at the last couple of years, you have, we look at the, you know, asset-to-liability ratio, and it's gone up from two to a little over two to one to almost two point five to one. So you see a steady, you know, financial growth by your district. And what we like to see is that you have, you know, a balance of reserves and fund balance. So you're planning for stuff for the future, and then you also have, you know, funds to, you know, to use now. In 2017, you had, you had reserves for employee retirement contributions, capital reserve, property loss and liability, unemployment, liability, and tax surcharge. So looking at that, in case things come up that are anticipated, you're able to cover those items. And the capital reserve is also a very good one to have, especially when you have capital projects coming up all the time. You have, you know, when you go out to vote, you have, you can put up cash, you know, when you go to instead of having to borrow everything, and it actually saves the district, you know, borrowing costs and legal fiscal. So looking at that, we like to see, and that's increased over the last three years. And then you also put two million dollars back to taxes, and you still have four percent. So looking at that, you have a good balance that is a reserve and fund balance, and that's what we like to see. How you got there, looking at your revenues compared to expenditures, you had a hundred, over a hundred and sixty-three million dollars in revenues compared to a hundred and sixty million expenditures, so almost a three million dollar surplus there. Looking at, we looked at your revenue compared to what you budget, and you actually obtained almost two point four million more than what you budgeted, which is excellent. Anytime you're able to get more than the budget amount is great. A couple of items were other tax items, missing links in state sources. And then looking at your expenditure side, you're very consistent every year. 2015 spent ninety-seven percent, 2016 was ninety-eight percent, and 2017 was just below ninety-eight percent, ninety-seven point seven. So looking at that, you have a consistent, fair budget, and that's what we like to see. It's not novel fluctuations, but you do have room in your budget for unanticipated things that do come up. And that's what we like to see, that you have a solid educational program that you can maintain on a long-term basis, and you're providing adequate resources and facilities. And just looking at your new high school, that's one of those things where, you know, proper planning, you're able to, you know, provide that. Another item that's a positive for your district is your school-wide program. You have a very healthy program, and you had a profit of sixteen thousand, which doesn't sound like a lot, but you actually gave money back to the general fund. So pretty much your school-wide program covers all their expenses, they're covering their benefits, they're covering costs that, you know, normally districts don't cover. So your program is doing an excellent job. Usually, most of our districts are the other way, where general fund and taxpayers are supplementing your program to keep it breakeven, and you're on the opposite end. So that's an excellent, another excellent item. The other positive item, you look at your debt service, you have almost two point six million dollars of fund now. That'll be helped to pay down future debt, payments, principal and interest. So you're in a positive, you look at your various funds, you're in a positive position going forward. So that's what we like to see when we come, you know, come and look at the district. So, is there any questions or...
Can I ask a question on the activity? Extra class on this one? Are you going to report out on that extra classroom separately?
Yeah, you have your, you have your other questions.
Okay, I'm just curious on the, the extra classroom activity. For instance, the student council at Bailey ended up with eleven thousand dollars. Don't know why, is that... I mean, that seems like a lot to be left over from last year.
Because that was, that's what, you know, what they collect through fundraisers and stuff like that.
Right.
Yeah, because they do fundraisers, and then whatever has, you know, whatever balances left. And it could be, I don't know, you know, what they've had in the past, but... And a lot of student councils actually do carry balances. A lot of districts do have that, so they do carry...
Same apply compared to all the other balances for all the other activities? Okay, thank you.
Also, in terms of the extracurricular, I was just wondering, I knew there was a problem earlier in the year last year with the MCM, something about fundraising accounts. And I just wondered if there was corrective action taken for that this year? So that's not going to be a problem going into the...
Yeah, sorry. It's very good.
Great.
Address.
So they, just to clarify, Pacilla's question, or, oh, sorry, Mrs. La's question. You can carry fund balances over as an extracurricular activity, or do you have to use specified...
Nope, no, they can, yeah, they can, yeah. A lot of them do that because someone raises money, like, like a drama raises money, and then they have their, you know, their play or something.
So they don't have to use them that year?
Nope. Now, say you have no activity, like, the club is just sitting there, and the funds aren't being used.
Right.
Then you have to decide, and then after a year or so, then the board will decide if, you know, then you would...
We should continue supporting that club.
And then that's what happens, a lot of times, those inactive ones, they, the money goes to student council because it benefits everybody. So that's how sometimes you end up with larger amounts in student council.
So is the recommendation, if the fund hasn't been used for two years, to, that the board should look at it?
Yeah, it reminds me, sometimes there's no financial activity, they still are active, but they don't. But usually, within two years, if you have any financial activity, then, yeah, usually there's a recommendation for the board to, you know, move it to some club that benefits the whole student or, you know, student body, so.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, Mr. Prusser. Just a little comment about several of your findings, and just want to read a couple lines that the United of No Transactuous entered into the Kitchener School District during the year, which is a sort of authoritative guidance or consensus. You also know that there were more difficult this encounter performing the audit, and I was pleased to see that the report showed no such disagreements with the course of the audit. And I would like to commend our business office, that I've been serving on the Audit and Finance Committee for five years, and I know that the business office is doing a tremendous job, and they're true professionals. And I would say that the district is very glad to have people like that on the, working for us. So I would say that we should be thankful and grateful. I thank you very much.
Thank you for your report. I agree with Mr. Michael's comments. Also, I just want to emphasize that on the, on the financial statement, the general financial statement, there were no findings, which means that we don't have to file a corrective action plan on this audit, which is very unusual. I think this is the first time in a long time that we haven't had to file a corrective action plan. So I want to applaud everybody involved in the financial functioning of the district. It's kudos.
Got a good hat, definitely.
And, and we have a question, so. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you very much.
I will agree with Mr. Shaughnessy and Mr. Michael. I call this is what are, the show's in, Carlson, the big three, and they, we are, it's good hands, and they do a fantastic job for us.
I would like to, who knows, because I would be remiss to sound the third in the audit. I have to say.
Me and Mr. Tom's like are way off, and we are not in alignment here. But, so, I'm going to, I'm going to, we're going to do that, so look at our drift. We are going to go out of order, and I'm going to bring up our architects of our project, CS Arch.
You're going to go with that?
Sorry, Tom. Please, Mr. Tom, let me... You say one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
How much do we owe you for that?
Sorry, Michaelino for BBL is here and there. Again, they're serving our construction, the team in this project, as well as the Second Century Project, so they get to come to every board meeting.
I'm Brian Mann, I'm listening to that, me. I'm with Caitlin Daly tonight, she's an architect in our office. She's been working on the plans and attending all the meetings, and she's going to go through the plans in a minute. We're here just to update you on the progress and where we're at today. The project is in construction documents, design development phase, getting ready for an SEB submission at the end of December. It's a quick process getting through that because you have issues with selling this building and having to be out there on a certain date. And on that, I have your news. Spoke with Roseanne Roth at SEB, and she is willing to expedite this project because of the value of the building. So she didn't give me an exact number of weeks she would expedite it, but it's going to be substantial, especially if it's in the newspaper. Project, and helping, just if it happened to be. So I just wanted to tell you that. We're working on your behalf at SEB, and I think they're going to play, play ball with us. We've been having additional meetings with different user groups, IT department recently, specialist department, et cetera. Holding in on a fine detail of the plan, there are a few changes that Caitlin will go through on where we're locating certain items in the building due to those meetings. You're pretty much wrapped up, except for if anyone on the board has to be involved in looking at the boardroom or other parts of the project. Then you can get in touch with Dr. Padalino, and we can set up a meeting, or whatever kind of format you want to do that in, if you want to give some input on that. So we'd appreciate that. So I'm going to just turn this over to Caitlin right now and go through the plans real quick.
All right, so this is our first floor plan. Looking at a renovated Mahar, and we look at colors, that'll get more in-depth. Our office where the pre-K is going to be, green is your boardroom and conference rooms. Right down here is going to be the IT department. Blue is your business, and then we have the registrar office. So if we look at it a little more in-depth, so this is what the business area is going to look like. So your main entry is going to be in here, and this is going to be the tax office, so everybody can queue up in here, and then you have your business offices. So all your offices up here, you already have. And everybody has their own little office space broken up. And then here, we're looking at the IT department and the new boardroom, which is about two point two square feet bigger than what you are in right now. And it's going to have monitors on both sides so that we're not all looking at one place, and everybody can see everything.
And the audience can see it.
The audience can see it, too. You're not all looking through, everybody. And the registrar office is going to be located here. So this is the main public space of the building, so that it can, all the access is going to be controlled through the security office, which is here. So if you get into this door, and then you have to be let in to the rest of the building. So all access is going to be controlled through here versus the office building right now, where everybody can walk in, and then security guards is way over there. A little bit more secure. And then this is the pre-K area, which is going to be completely separate from the office section, with the wall here, you have your own secure office, and the classrooms that are being renovated, still the story area, where they can all gather with their story kind inside. And then the second floor is where the superintendent's office, the two departments for elementary and secondary education, the special ed department, transportation, some more pre-K classrooms, and a couple more conference rooms. So I'm told there's three conference rooms inside the boardroom. So this is taking a look at the area that has the elementary and secondary education departments, split up into the two different sides, and then a conference room over on the side. Taking a look over here, we have the superintendent's suite, the communication department, transportation, special ed, and a kitchenette up in that little outdoor classroom space. We're taking down all the walls and the stairwells to open it up and bring some more light down into the first floor and make it a bit more of a lively space. And there will be an elevator located here, right in two floors, my transportation, a little bit more, so.
Can you go back to the last slide? What was that other orange?
This, so this is in the addition that's over here, that's going to be two additional pre-K rooms that we're going to renovate, but...
Is it the current?
The current.
Kindergarten and first grade?
Yeah, the current, first grade.
It's the connected rooms on the top floor.
Right. So the pre-K...
So the pre-K will be on first and second floor?
And then the large area, that's the ceiling or the open area of the, or is that?
This area here.
That's the upper gym.
That's it.
The upper part.
Yeah. So that whole area is going to still be pre-K. Yes.
And then on the first floor, if you go back to the first floor, what is the, over where the, next to the gym, those are, were those formerly locker rooms or something?
Yeah.
And the kitchen?
That'll be the kitchen?
Yes. Yeah, that area is staying as it is.
There's going to be a lot of file storage there and a small kitchen put back in.
What about the basement? Is there anything involved in the basement? Boiler or?
We are putting in all new ventilation systems, so that is going to all go in there. We are putting in, the existing boilers are staying where they are. We're going to be working around them, putting in new systems.
So I'll touch on that a little bit. Because the office functions need air conditioning, we're going to be doing rooftop mechanical units in the center of the building to supply air conditioning heating for those. And then putting a few small new boilers, probably in this room, that went right through the roof, that will provide heat to the orange part of the building. So the boilers that are in the basement are going to stay there as a boiler museum. Charge efficiently. The cost of getting them out of there just got ridiculous, and we said, well, why don't we just work around it? So that's what you're going to do.
Are you going to take them already there?
Shut them up.
We'll shut them up right after we start.
All right, we just ask questions as we go. Do you want to say it's the same until the end?
We have a question you can ask.
Oh, I already asked one. Okay. So I'm just trying to, I understand that there'll be entrance on the blue side of the building for where the tax. So where does pre-K enter from?
So, I'll just go back to your, maybe. So pre-K enters here.
Okay, so it's a separate entrance?
Yeah.
And?
Is that the back?
It's the back.
Yeah.
It's the both are back.
And as far as these classrooms go, are we going to be modifying the bathrooms and the spaces for pre-K students? Or are we going to be leaving them for possible multi-use if we don't use them for pre-K?
They are already set at the same height for that.
So they're already, because that was where the kindergarten was, so they're already built?
Yeah, they're already built.
Okay, so, but there will be no other accommodations made for specifically pre-K besides the story room, so if we were to use it as another, it would be able to be used as a multi-use in the event that we need to do?
Yes. And we are adding two other bathrooms here that would be adult height bathroom. For, you know, if you're having an open house, we do need two additional bathrooms, so.
I think, I think what you're asking is, are we going to have any flexibility in the design?
Yeah, we're all tiny toilets and we have all that classrooms, so we have to use high toilets.
And we haven't made any, the bathrooms are elementary bathrooms, but we're not making any, you know, specific changes in the construction areas that are, that would restrict us from doing something different. Should, in the future, that be something we want to do?
We could use the storytime bit for adults, yeah.
Absolutely.
So there's no way for someone to enter in through the office side and get into the pre-K, right? They're two separate entities?
They're two separate entities. The only time you would be going into the pre-K is we still have a door from the boardroom that would exit into here for safety purposes. So we'll be able to exit and go out.
Right, but one of the concerns from the public was that they'd be people angry, people paying their taxes that could go into the pre-K and take it out on them, so. Yeah, and last question for us, the cafeteria. I noted that we're going to be feeding pre-K, so we're just going to be bussing it, like bringing in a van, or there's not going to be cooking going on?
We'll have a small kitchen, and just like we do now with our other schools, we have, you know, the main, the main cooking in our district happens at Valley, the big kitchen, so we'll be able to provide from there.
Okay, but will we have, prepare to provide some meals, all that? Okay, thank you.
So, show me the entrances again. That's the back entrance.
People run to the back.
To the public, what about a front entrance?
That is, that is the only.
Because there's a front of the building, that's not ahead.
We won't be using that.
It's not accessible.
Well, staff that have access, we use it, but the public will always go to the back of the building. There'll be new parking and a drop-off.
Transportation will come up that parking lot, if you remember from the previous transportation. Transportation will come around the building, the buses and the drop-offs up in the, what's now the concrete playground kind of area, plate area. That'll be, that's going to be converted into a bus loop, really, so our students can be dropped off there and exit there. So that'll be our main, that'll really be the main entrance, and again, only faculty or staff will be able to go in through the stairs.
So we're removing the only play space?
What's that?
We're removing the only play space, is that all?
Oh, no, we have plenty of play space. We have that whole field down at the bottom of the hill.
Right, but the playground's up there, right?
There is no playground anymore.
Okay.
It's coming though.
Okay, but then that, that field is going to be used for?
The field's going to be used.
What sort of back of the building will become the playground?
Yes, because the other entities are not accessible.
There is some grass left, though, in the back, behind the gym.
This is a theme, we're going to the high schools.
So, can we eventually get a copy? Like this is difficult for me to see. Are we going to be able to get a colored copy of this?
We can, we can put it in the library. Absolutely. Mr. Manning will send it to me tomorrow. I'll put it in my book.
Thank you.
I'll include some of the previous slides that have pictures of the outsides, so you can see it. That's kind of what I think you're missing right now, is that visual.
So you said the boardroom, the main room is 200 square feet more than this room?
Yes.
And then there's also a conference room, that's where we'll meet for executive session?
Yes.
And that's additional to the 200 additional square feet?
Yes.
And the public will be coming in through the business office side to, will they attend the board meeting?
Yeah, they'll come in here.
And then what did you say about the stairways?
Right now, the stairways are all enclosed in the building. We'll be taking down the enclosures and opening up the first floor.
At one time, they were open. There was a lot of light in there, but they enclosed them because of the school building. Now that you're using it for office purposes, you don't have to have those walls anymore. So taking them down is going to be great enough.
And then what's above that area where the stairs are, between the boardroom and the IT department, the second floor, is that?
Offices.
It's offices above there.
Yes.
And so that'll be a waiting area for?
Yeah, with this one here.
Yep.
And people coming in for CSE meetings and whatnot will be able to use the elevator to get to the second floor?
Yep.
So it'll be handicap accessible?
A little smaller, that's down near the gymnasium rename?
Yes.
To be able to go from that level to the first floor?
Yes.
And then there'll be an elevator?
Yes.
And just to, just to, I'm sorry. And that area there that Mr. Shaughnessy just pointed out where people wait here while they're on executive session, they won't have to wait out there anymore, because there will be an executive session in a conference room, so people can just come into the board from itself and wait for the board to come out.
Question? No. Sir, I was going to get one. So the, the, I'm sorry.
Suzanne keeps getting, Suzanne keeps getting.
The front entrance?
Yes.
Won't have any steps or anything? That's handicap accessible from there?
Correct.
All right. Okay. What I wanted to ask is, I know that the board is concerned about the boardroom, and we talked about having two screens, that was one of our concerns. The other thing is sound.
Yes.
So?
It'll be all wired, new sound, new HP or AV, and everybody's back to everything. It'll be a brand-new AC for them.
It doesn't have to be that fancy.
I never knew how to look to myself.
We get paid a lot of money.
We already get paid a lot. Is there any space that is still available for storage anywhere in that?
Storage?
Yes.
The basement?
The basement.
Yes.
And where the boiler is, is there?
There were two classrooms down there.
Yes, I know. The business offices.
Okay.
Doesn't have the boilers, so that'll be all storage.
I'm asking because there was inquiry about the possibility, since this is going to be new office space for the district, if there could be like enough room for there to be a resource closet for teachers, perhaps. Is there any space that that might be appropriate for? So you have that in the next one?
Like in the boilers, could we take the boilers and cut out the side?
Storage is inside the boiler? There is a boiler.
Boilers are here.
Yeah, I mean, so like, have you exposed that? I don't know.
The revenue from the museum is going to be.
And you mentioned that there was, there needed to be AC for the office suites, there's not going to be AC with pre-K portion of the building, though?
I'm sorry, is that going to be?
There was a statement about the putting the chillers.
At this point, we weren't contemplating air conditioning that. We can, if you want us to look into that. The pre-K portion of the building?
It just seems a little, it feels a little weird to say we're going to give the adult administrators air conditioning, but not air conditioning for maybe the rest of the building.
There are two months a year that the administration works with schools in session.
I'm not saying it's air conditioning.
It's just called summer.
Okay.
Just as a, and I think that's something we can look at.
Maybe at least have a potential, or so, in case we use it for people of the summer? Or events? Just a nice fan, that's just an idea. Just like the resource rooms.
Can you suggest a configuration of the board table that's not linear?
Yes.
I will work on it.
What shape? Well, I mean, I think that something, you know, semi-circular or, you know, I don't think that we want to sit in a straight line and not be able to see each other. I mean, that visual contact is important.
Yes.
Yes. I'm just curious in terms of security. I'm assuming it's going to be state-of-the-art, but would there be keypads, et cetera, pops, et cetera, for the pre-K? A little bit more concerned with security being heightened in that section.
Yes, we're calling for all new entry into, for all the exterior doors, so there will be access at all the door entries, so you only can have car access to get into the building.
So it would be just as at all the other schools, they'd have to be buzzed in or out because students can't leave on the front door?
Except for the public entrance where people are paying the taxes, et cetera.
Yeah, there's only two places you can enter the building, and then you first enter to a vest and a coat, and then you have to be buzzed in from there. So the rest of the doors remain locked, but they have car access for people who have permission.
Do you have any further insight into what the state aid for the project will be other than what you presented to us a year ago?
Well, they've been riding their feet on it. We're going to answer to that. I have to get after them on these answers. It's not going to get worse than what we told you, but we're hoping it's going to get substantially better. We're making arguments with them, and they're not giving back those. We'll update you after some.
Okay, so I'll talk briefly about a challenging schedule. So Brian touched base, this is a quick snapshot of some fixed figure dollars, so the project cost has improved 4.2 million change. We are already turning to the DB, running development stage. We've done a lot of whatevs, where elevator goes, keep the boilers, move the boilers, rooftop mechanical units, constantly engaging in dialogue proceeding. What we can put in the building maximizes the same within the budget. And where we're at right now is we're on track with the budget, and we're going to continue as we go from design development, certain documents, addressing all the needs and trying to maximize the project cost amount. We have set up a timeline of going to state that here in December for a stated approval and trying to project where they currently seeing in an eight-month window, plus or minus. Brian brought some great news, so we'll adjust that accordingly. We'll again continue to look at opportunities, can we do an update package while we sit reviews, mechanical, architectural components. The goal ultimately is that for the start of the 2019 academic business school year, we have been moving in occupied building at that time. So everything's on track now? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Dexter, are you picturing it?
I just want to say that there was air conditioning outside of those new rooms. The rooms themselves weren't air conditioned, but the rooms, there was. Brian and I want you to know there was air conditioning.
We're both biting our tongue here.
It's all good. And I could give you a tour of those cat homes in the basement any day.
I could just see you picturing in your.
I was, yeah.
That, oh, sorry, that Mr. Clapper. Our second with our owner's representative report.
You tried to get in there, Alan.
And I had no part in that. I want everyone to know that. I wasn't trying to get home to watch baseball or anything. I wasn't part of it. Project's going on very well, things are moving along. One of the issues that we had on the wings when we first opened them, that the operable petitions weren't in place, they're all in place now. This is one of the tech rooms on the east wing, and that's the new wall. As you can see, it's a movable panel, and every panel is individual, so you can either leave a half wall up, close it all the way, there's a lot of options with it. And the other thing is, the strip in the middle isn't just decoration, that's all white boards. So you get to wait, on both sides are white boards through that whole strip. This is an interesting picture, that's a very old wall, that is the pit for the elevator going at the end of Solson on the south end, that's going to service the new south lobby going to the second floor. In the cafeteria area, the security gate's already in place to the kitchen. The area is still on target to be delivered for the second semester right after Christmas break. There's some electrical for the kitchen. The new freezer's in place, food locker's in place, and off to the side, up to your left, that shiny thing is the hood for the pizza oven, and all the hoods are in place also. The kitchen has an epoxy floor, and it's all done, it's all been protected, it's ready to go. We're getting delivery of all the kitchen equipment next week, and that will start to be put in. The kitchen area is basically completed except for the ceiling break. We had to leave that out for all of the chemicals and everything. This is a picture of the library. It's a little bit less done, but we're going to deliver that in September. We are actually a little bit ahead of schedule on that, too, but they're working in that area. These are the bathrooms on the second floor, also being delivered next September, but since this picture was taken, that was taken last Thursday, the epoxy floor is done in the bathrooms, too, and it's ready for the fixtures and petitions and all that. So they'll be done by the end of November without any trouble. Over at the fieldhouse, railings have gone up, concrete work has been done, there's been some repairs. We still have a list of items that are deficient, and we're working on those with the contractor. We're there every weekend, there's some night work going on to continue that process. Out on Amber Street, this is the new set of stairs coming from the pool side of the building for access to the back of the building, and that comes up by the girls' locker room, and then there's a set of stairs up to the main floor. And all the railings, you can see all the site lighting's done, and all the railings are done on that side. On the east wing and west wing, we've been doing owner training. That is the rooftop unit, and that's our HVAC guys and our electricians and custodians talking with the manufacturer rep on how those things operate. They're quite technical, but they're very interested in them, and we're doing a good job at that. We have probably another 20 or 25 owner rep, owner trainings to go on, from phone systems to lighting systems, everything that we have to learn about this new building. We have probably another 20 or 25 owner rep, owner trains to go on from phone systems to lighting systems, everything that we have to learn about this new building. Which brings me to MJM. As a community, it was an emotional thing. And we, I can't tell you the amount of people that came and watched the demolition of this building. They would sit up on the Silty Finn parking lot. We had several requests for pieces of it for memorabilia. We actually set bricks outside so that people could take a brick for, and we set over 300 bricks out and 24 hours they were gone. So there was a lot of traffic there when this was going on. This is the day that the dome came off the top and my guys brought it out to, it's at Miller Field right now in Popeyes and it's covered and it's being protected for whatever use we're gonna use it for. We've got the cornerstones, not only the dated cornerstones, but we have all the other cornerstones. And there's a little surprise in that, there's a time capsule and we have to figure out when we're gonna open that. So we're kinda excited about that. These are the different stages of demolition. It is completely on the ground right now and they're separating everything out for disposal. This is a video, I don't know how to get the video to start. I had to throw this in because it's very, very interesting. So this guy has an I-beam at the end of his, at the end of his excavator and that one piece of wood is holding up that entire roof. The best part about this is when this guy backs out, when that thing comes back, that you can't believe how fast an excavator can move. The other thing is, it's... And as it comes down. The building was built with rose bricks from Roseston, New York, right down by Milton, just below Ohio. Believe it or not, it was a big brick area, just like Kingston. It was locally done. We're in good company with MJM, the Waldorf Astoria, the Singer Tower, the Stock Exchange. Parts of, parts of the Empire State Building were all built with the same bricks that MJM were built up. As you can see, they need a lot of bricks. Oh, I'm sorry. And that leads me to, I thought there was one more slide, I'm sorry. So we have a gift for all the board members, because we know that we have to understand our past, we know where we came from, to understand our future and to build for the future. So even though we took down MJM, we are building a much better learning environment for our students, but we still have to remember our past. So we have a gift for all board meetings members. So EBL, because they helped us take it down, is gonna help you with the bricks.
Are there any more last time my grandmother wanted?
Yes. So there's a second piece to this, not only do all the board members... Not only do all the board members got a brick, but there's probably another 20 bricks out on the table for anybody that would like to take bricks today. And we've put another pile of bricks outside the fence. The problem is, is that when you run a 30-ton machine with a brick, they kind of hold rocks. And so the bricks are becoming less and less abundant. There was 1.1 million bricks and we harvested about 1,000 bricks. And I'm gonna say probably by Friday or Monday, there's not gonna be too many whole bricks. I did not count the bricks. How we calculated the bricks was, since you asked. I did a little research on it and a common construction rule is that 6.3 bricks per square foot. So I took the square footage of the building, I minused out the windows and I did a little math. The bricks, at the bottom of the walls, the bricks were about eight wide and at the top, they were about five wide. And I did the math out and it actually came about to almost 1.3 million, but I wanted to make sure that I was under and somebody could call me on it, so... Yay. We have two extras, one for the board, very kind, one for the superintendent. And like I said, there's more bricks out in the hallway. But again, I have to say, the community supported us in this project and they've been watching the project and they watched this very carefully as this came down. There's a woman, I believe she lives on Amber Street, that every day, same time every morning, she took a video for about five minutes and she has a progression of the entire building as it goes down. And Mark Hammersley, the pony driver, did the same thing. When he was there at noon time, he took a picture every day at noon time from Silty Finn's parking lot. And he's gonna post that somewhere. So hopefully he posts it or something like that.
I have a question on the girls locker room. Do they enter from Amber Street area?
No, no. Actually, that was an e-dress room because when the gym is full, there's a couple of thousand people in it and it was a code requirement. One of the other things, that staircase was there, but there was no staircase for the boiler room or going, there's another door there, I'm trying to remember what it's for. So what we did is, we have a sidewalk back there that comes down to a central staircase and we have e-dress room in the building out of that area. The only thought with that in design was that if we had a visiting team, they could park their bus there, because a lot of times the visiting team uses the girls locker room as their locker room and the boys locker room is used for the home team. And so they could exit out, get on the bus and exit from it.
The stairway from the, down to Amber Street, very steep from the picture, is that just the reception?
No, actually what happened was the picture was too big and I had to squeeze it, so it probably distorted. It is a legal code compliance staircase.
Can you come up with an idea about the dome?
Well, originally, we submitted to SHPO what we had to harvest from the building. So what I didn't show you is all the little round windows out of the Kubla area. There was also a round window from over the front door, we have that. We have all the other cornerstones and that was all guided by SHPO what we had to save. And one of the things was the copper dome. We talked about having a monument incorporate into it and the team really hasn't come up with a plan for that monument yet. But the dome is quite big, it's a foot six in diameter. So the monument would be very dedicated. So we're keeping it, we'll submit to SHPO what we're going to do as far as memorializing MJM and we'll see what we're gonna do with the dome.
Thank you, Mr. Claver. That concludes the face of the superintendent's report.
Okay, which brings us to consent agenda. Are there any revolutions gonna end, trustee, for like openness agenda? All right, I want to take a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Commissions?
Mr. Brink, thank you.
Which brings us to a board education. And policy committee, November 1st, I'll turn to the leader, Mrs. Pauls.
Ah, yes, tonight we have policy up for adoption.
Oh, no, sorry.
Didn't need a meeting.
No, today's the one.
Meeting on November 3rd.
Tonight we have a policy 8410, transportation policy. On the agenda, we had it for first reading last time around, covering some minor updates. So I'd like to move that policy forward tonight for adoption.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
We have a meeting slated for Friday, that might change depending on what our meeting's from agenda. Agenda items, but we always meet the first Friday of each week, so that's when it's slated, which is this Friday, November 3rd.
Thank you very much. And the stadium commission, also in that, Mr. Michael?
Well, the thing I'd like to say last night, I attended the community meeting. It was the city hall presented by the city and the New York State Representatives about the downtown rehabilitation plan. I guess if they work, it's not downtown, it's actually uptown. Staging area, where the city plans to spend $10 million for improvements, public and I was excited to hear what the city plans to invest up most of, some of the money or most of the money on the stadium. So let's hopefully, it would be the best interest for our district and our community. And also would be, you know, the city's a vehicle, economic, of the county. So hopefully that would be the future, the key. That's all, I had to report.
I have a question, not for Mr. Michael, maybe none of us know the chef, but would the school district have input into the plan?
The, the committee, they created a community committee and it has various interested people on the committee, from businesses, from in our district where Mrs. Heidegger, we're representing the district as a member of the committee, so...
There is, just to jump in for a second, I was at that meeting as well and the... As far as the stadium commission still exists and the shared ownership of the stadium still exists, so, and the collaboration between the city and the district is, you know, is there. So I think as we move forward, depending on what the future of the stadium, I have no reason to believe that we won't be involved. I actually shared some preliminary drawings that we had put together on the stadium back a couple of years ago when we were looking at some things within there. And we did, we were, you know, pleased that the mayor had asked for Ms. Heidecker to be on the, be on the local planning committee to just be able to at least represent the district.
Thank you very much. Which brings us to audit finance and Mr. Shans.
We got on October 24th, or at least ago yesterday, we reviewed the, or accepted the treasurer's reports and claims auditor reports for August and September. Did we approve those, did we accept those as part of the consent agenda?
No, they're on here, so...
Previously, we didn't? I thought that we had, I thought there were resolutions.
No, the record, you... No, no, the order's report was, it was on the consent agenda.
No, but I didn't previous, previous made it.
Oh, no, we just got these reports that you just reviewed, we did not do the, the...
Oh, okay. So we did, we also had a presentation by the, by Mr. Corso of the audit, the audit reports for both the general report and exit classroom activity. And we discussed the internal audit, the internal auditor and discussed a focus area for that and whenever I see a moment, I forget what we decided. Did we, what did we recommend? What are we, what are we planning on recommending?
Purchasing.
Purchasing. Purchasing. So that will be the focus area for the internal audit for coming months. So I'd like to move... Yeah, we, whatever it is, 43, 44. Yeah, we 43, 44, accepting claims auditors' reports and treasurer's reports for August and September.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, abstentions. Thank you very much. And then concludes the trade reports, they're for this meeting. That brings us to old business. Are there any of this old business, trustees would like to raise, Mrs. Jordan?
The only old business that I had tended to at all was the concern about school safety zones. So I had written to Mr. Heine, who directed me to Robert Sudgo's response and I had a conversation with planning director Dennis Doyle. It seems that because most of these are county roads, the only thing we could do is try to advocate for different signage. So in terms of lowering the speed limit or that kind of thing, that's really up to the county. We could, you know, try to advocate for that. But he did say that he thought that there could be a possibility of maybe getting some signage up. So I'll have another conversation with him and ask him what specifically we had in...